...Custer County Board of County Commissioners meeting of Wednesday, September the 20th. To order. Can you all rise please with the pledge of allegiance? Sergeant Halpin, would you do the honor of leading the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Clerk please call the board.
Commissioner Katnick.
President.
Commissioner Hood.
President.
Commissioner French.
President.
Attorney Clint Smith.
President.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper, President.
Do we have any additions or amendments to the agenda as advertised?
I do not.
Okay. Make motion to approve that the agenda is published. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Move the second to approve the agenda. Any comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. I'd like to introduce the audience, please, and maybe we can start with Jeff. Josh Barra, what more?
Ruth Barra, what more?
Lomond Gray, what more?
Courtney Davenport, what more?
Jackie Bubus, for the Sentinel.
Brenda Gady.
John Johnston.
Ethel Toletta, the Custer County EMS Manager.
Linda Washington.
Ann Barford.
Ann Wilson.
Audrey Walker, Ms. Zansky.
Rose Hiderby, what more?
Emily Ward, what more?
Dee Dee Wood.
Thank you very much. At this time, I believe we have some minutes for approval. Let's take the ones from August the 31st.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as recorded.
I'll second the motion.
Move the second to approve the minutes as recorded. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. The minutes of September the 5th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as recorded.
Move the second to approve the minutes of September the 5th. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Minutes of September the 6th.
I'll move that we approve the minutes for September.
Pardon me?
I move that we approve the agenda, excuse me, the minutes for September 6th.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, we'll have a public comment period. Any comments from the audience, please? Yes, ma'am?
I would like to know when the reverse 911 is going to be fixed. I've been relying on a neighbor the last nine months to get messages to me, and that's not right. It needs to be done.
Well, ma'am, I guess I'll let Donna's working on part of our phone connections, but that is probably an issue with the Sheriff's Department. We have had a lot of problems, not only with you, but with our 911 system. We are putting as much pressure as we can on the, on AT&amp;T and the other carriers, not only through our own connections, but with Senator Gardner and also with Senator Commerce Clinton.
I was told there's a problem with the map on there.
You were told what, ma'am?
There's a problem with the map on the location of where I live, and that has been intervened twice.
Well, I have no answer to that, ma'am. I'll be happy to explore it further unless one of my colleagues up here wishes to comment. That's an area that is a technical area that is handled by our emergency insurance and primary, I believe. Help me out here, Mike, as we work with the Sheriff's Department on that, right?
Well, Chuck does the mapping. Have you reported this to our IT person, Chuck Ipeleto?
Cindy has known about it for the last six months, and she's been telling me that she's going to get it fixed, and it's not been done.
Good point on.
I'm just going to say Chuck is on vacation. If I could get your name and telephone number and your address, and when he comes back next week, I'll address that with him directly.
Okay.
Okay? I was not aware of the situation, and I doubt that he was either. Okay? But he's the one responsible for our mapping for 911.
Okay.
Okay?
And who did you report it to?
Cindy knows about it.
To who?
Cindy.
Worked off OEM?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll check and see if that, again, there's, it's challenging to get everything you work like you want on the board. I apologize that you haven't had service, but we will assume we can fix it. But it's not, our computer systems are not quite as fast and as new as they might be, and it does take some time, but you'll start to follow through on that.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I was wondering if you had signed off and paid on this building yet, because there's still some issues.
I learned about two of them this morning. I was unknown. One was, and I wrote it down, that the sink still has a little leak in it, that the dishwasher is missing a specific piece of apparatus inside to make it function properly. Is there anything else that needs to be fixed?
The mop sink downstairs.
Is there a problem with it, or is it just the height not low?
We already know about that issue, the height?
Yeah. There was an issue with putting it low because of the, it was a drainage issue, so they put the higher one. I know it's a pain in the neck, but I think it may be something we might end up having to live with. The other two I will address as soon as this meeting is over. I was not aware of those.
Okay. We're also wondering, is there going to be ADA push buttons on these ADA bathrooms upstairs and downstairs?
No, that wasn't in the plan. What we asked the contractor to do, and they told me they did it, and if it's not right, you tell me. They told me they loosened it so that a wheelchair could easily open the door now and slide in. It's still not acceptable.
Absolutely. I think ADA requires that button to be on to start with. Somebody's going to come back at you if it isn't done.
Okay. Let me look into that. I don't know the answer.
Anything else on the building? You got something, John?
That was my question.
Just that.
Yes. Hello, my name's Linda Washington. I'd like my comments to be on the record today.
Ma'am, why don't you come on up here so the Commissioners can hear?
Okay. With the recall now on the ballot, the lies, rumors, and innuendo are running amok on the internet. Both sides talk of intimidation. If people had spent more time listening, which was what was promised by Commissioners, by townspeople, the hateful speech wouldn't be happening. Or maybe it happens no matter who's in office. I don't know. But it is my understanding that if someone wants to be put on a ballot, they have to have a candidate's petition filled out with a certain amount of signatures. How does one get these signatures? I suppose you could stand in front of a grocery store to gather signatures, or go to the movie theater on Friday and Saturday night and gather signatures. Perhaps people can go door to door and actually meet their neighbors and collect signatures at the same time. I know going door to door is how I've met many people in this county, and I've also collected signatures. Most of the people I've never met before. Some say, "Thanks, no thanks, I've not done anything about it, I'm not signing anything, I disagree with it." Some stand on the porch and talk a while, some invite me in. It's a great way to meet people, whether we agree on issues or not. Listening to others and learning about them can be enlightening, and it's always worthwhile. But social media being what it is today, a place for anger, aggression, and intimidation, as well as a place for listening and learning, is what I'd like to focus on. Recently, a supporter of the present Commissioners who describes herself as a flaming liberal atheist who hates bigots said, "Can anyone explain to me why a local Republican ex-pastor, who also happens to be black, was just here advocating against building codes?" Is this part of the recall? This was met with question posts including, "That was rude," and, "Can I ask you what color man's skin has to do with anything?" As long as a lot, plus a lot of vulgarity, this included that I'm not going to mention. Additional comments from the flaming liberal atheist who hates bigots included, "It isn't about his skin color. I was merely trying to be descriptive, since there are only a handful of black people in this lily-white town. I was merely using his color to try to narrow down who he was and who he was representing." How many black men who are ex-pastors do you know in West Cliff wanted to know who he was and who sent him? There are not many black Republicans either. One of the Commissioners' spouses responded to the post and apologized not for the uncultured comments, but that the writer of these comments got griefed by other commenters. Regarding this post, I directed the readers to a site called The Rocky Mountain Black Conservatives, which has a following of 90,000 people. My response also included the following: "My husband is not an ex-pastor. He is a retired fire chief and peace officer, who presently, and for the past 10 years, has been the pastor at Westminster Presbyterian Church in Pueblo. He and I have gone out knocking on doors to solicit signatures for our neighbor Bill Kanda and other candidates. We are doing this on our own." While I was initially dismayed by the vulgarity at the posting on the Commissioner Prince WhatsApp Facebook page, it got me to thinking, "Who sent us knocking on doors?" The answer's God, because we are to meet our neighbors. We are to love our neighbors, not just those who are like us, but also those who are not. So we will not be intimidated by posts like the one on Commissioner Prince's page. My husband and I will continue to knock on doors to meet our neighbors, no matter whether they are like us or not. Thank you."
Thank you for your comment. I appreciate that. We used to have the party line as the source of local communication. All of you remember, there were long, you would remember when you picked up the party line and the less you could hear, that meant you had more neighbors listening to you. And now we've gone to Facebook, and I agree with you, ma'am, the stuff, some of the attacks that I've endured are, I mean, are, I just don't even respond to them. It's unfortunate that our social media sometimes, but again, at the same time, we come back with a tenet of, you know, of free speech, but I certainly think it's appropriate when there are things on there that are socially unacceptable, that you exercise every right and each specific.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Mr. Adams. Mr. Hood.
Okay. I'd like to report that the reviews that I was responsible for are complete. On Monday, Commissioners spent the day with our US Forest Service, and it was a very informative day. From, I was out there from 9 till 4 o'clock, and we were in different parts of our county, and it was a great day, and we had five different presentations from our local rangers. And last evening, we had a presentation of our county buildings, three of the buildings, done by the University of Colorado. Jeff Wood did a great presentation. We didn't have a lot of people that I see in the audience here, but some were there, and I thought the presentation was very comprehensive and will be a tool for us to move forward with planning for our county.
And I did the same things you did, so I don't have any data.
Okay, again, we were involved in most of those. Also, last evening at 4 o'clock, I met with the task force from the upper Arkansas Council of Governments on Recycling from landfills. There was a push last year that we were going to go over to a regional landfill rather than having the smaller county landfills, and that appeared to kind of die down from a recycling standpoint. Our county is exceeding the goal set by the state for recycling. We have as an example, and I'm just pulling this off the top of my head, that we recycled about 120 tons of cardboard last year. This year, it appears that we're on pace to exceed that. We also recycle plastics, basically as a service that really has much of market for. But in terms of what our county is accomplishing, we're ahead of a lot of the counties in Colorado in terms of the amount of our landfill materials that we're recycling. An area we talked about that I think bears further maybe examination is that we need to maybe be looking at how do we recycle some more of the construction materials. In the old days, where you could go to dump and you might find some treasures, there's times that I, when I lived in northeastern Colorado, for example, I had a lot of plywood and I had a lot of these materials and woodwork that I used for construction. And we can also, I think, make some of this stuff available for recycling possible. A couple of other things that here we might be able to qualify for from the recycling initiative is to, potentially, we can get a building for recycling, which will be state-funded, won't cost a county anything. And as we get into other equipment that we need for recycling, we do have the ability to bail cardboard now, but if there were other things that we can justify as enhancing recycling, we also have an opportunity to get some additional funding for those items. And those are 100% brand, no match blanks, so it gives us some opportunities. Same thing if we revise some equipment that would enhance our recycling development. As an aside to that, folks, the landfill this last year cost us about $18,000 to operate for the year. That means we were at $18,000 to break in either. Some counties of our size, it's costing $100,000 to $200,000 for the landfill facilities. So I think our landowners would like to recognize the job that Pastor Christensen and the crew are doing out there. Another thing that we're doing, which I think is very critical, you notice we have very little trash, paper, I don't know what they call it, blowing around out there. And I think they do a good job of blowing around and picking that stuff up so it doesn't become a nice one. That's all I have from the other than what everybody talked about, but I think it offers us some opportunities for some enhancements, perhaps, of our recycling opportunities. You folks here, I guess you go to the panel, don't you, with the stuff from the trash in this area?
It's picked up by.
There's a trash service.
We have a trash service that picks it up for us once a week in a covered city.
Where do they take it to, do you know?
No, I do not know.
I think that may go to, I don't think it's coming to our landfill out there. I think it's going.
I think it's going to Pueblo.
Pueblo, yeah. But it's going out of county.
Right.
But anyway, if we give some things, enhance recycling, again, if we can do something to enhance them here, we need to think about it. But I, I think recycling as we stand is important. It does reduce the amount of material going into the landfills, and it also then enhances we can recycle and reuse something. Okay. Attorney Adams.
Two things I want to talk about. One, several weeks ago, we discussed John Naylor's files. He has all of his files for his 46 years as county attorney, and the Board agreed that it was important to get those files and keep them for their historical value. I did talk to his office a couple of weeks ago. They're anxious to get those files out of there, so I would like some kind of arrangements made as soon as possible. A box trailer, maybe enough, you know, that they could all be hauled in one trip. If it was a pickup truck, it's going to take several trips, I should think, but they're sitting in his office, they're stacked in the hallway, I understand, so they would really be happy if we can get those files.
Is that on the main floor? Is that? A few steps, I'll thank you, sir.
It's sort of a half basement level, so there are a few steps going down to where the office is.
That you and I get together and let's talk with John, but I'll, I've got an 18-foot trailer that's boxing.
And we'll need some strong bodies, which means.
Okay. And I will make it so it's appropriate to use a couple of little bridge kids to go down and help us. We've done this in the past and moving things, and let's see if we can maybe get that done next week, so.
All right. Okay, the other issue on September 6th, this Board approved a ballot question concerning building code and fire code for Custer County. I prepared that, I prepared a resolution. Kelly told me that she could talk to the Secretary of State's office. They had some questions about it. Basically, to summarize it, I think the Board, when we talked, when you decided this, it would be only for the voters in the unincorporated areas of the county, that the, those registered voters, elected qualified, elected eligible voters, excuse me, qualified eligible voters who live in the towns of Silvercliff and Westcliff would not be sent ballots since they already have their own building code. And there was an issue ultimately, and Kelly, you can jump in, but they said it was our call on this, how we could do it either way, but if you do want to have the voters in Westcliff and Silvercliff vote on the resolution and the ballot question as it now stands, it's fine. However, if you want to limit it to the voters in the unincorporated areas of the county, then I think we need to amend the resolution, and I sent you all copies of this yesterday so you can see what I was suggesting. So it's whichever way you decide you want to go, we can do it either way on this.
All right. I'll ask my colleagues first if they'd like any comments on this. I don't either.
So just to verify, so I understand this, what we approved originally will now, could now stand for the entire county, including the two municipalities?
Correct. Yes, it would be, the way it's worded now, it's general, it just refers to all the voters, eligible voters in Custer County, so that would include the voters in Westcliff and Silvercliff. If you want to not have them vote on this issue, even though they're county residents as well, then we'd have to do the amended resolution.
I'm going to state that I would suggest that we just stay with our original motion.
I have the opposite opinion.
Pardon?
I have the opposite opinion. I feel that normally, when a vote is taken on something, the person who has the right to vote has some kind of stake in the outcome. I think there is no stake in the outcome for Westcliff and Silvercliff, and therefore, I personally prefer the amended resolution so that just the folks who are affected in the unincorporated areas get to voice their opinion.
Can I, can I just comment on that?
I'll go first, will you?
Sure.
I tend to agree with Jay. First of all, as you saw when it was coming up, I voted against putting him on a ballot. People in Westcliff and Silvercliff do not have a dog in a fight. They've got their own government, their own building codes are rate, and I think the only people that should be looking at this building code are those that are going to be directly impacted by it, and those are going to be directly impacted by the citizens of Custer County. I think that they're, excuse me, the rural citizens, the ones who live outside Westcliff. I think they're the ones who have the dog in a fight, and I think they're the ones who should be limited to voting. Don't face me.
I'm going to state to you that I know there are people that live in both Silvercliff and Westcliff that have property in the county, so I'm going to not limit their right to vote.
I've thought about that, Dawn. I respect that they have a right because it impacts their county properties. Counselor, what's your thoughts?
I don't really have an opinion on this. I, that was the same thought that occurred to me, that there are people that live in towns, in the two towns you do, you have property out in the unincorporated areas, so there would be some impact. Of course, there are a lot of people that have property in Custer County who are not residents, not eligible voters of the county, and they also have an interest in it, but they aren't allowed to vote on this issue. I, I think it's just a matter of discretion for the Board to decide which way it wants to go on it. You've expressed your opinions, and I don't, I don't have any particular opinion on it.
I'll make a motion, ma'am. I'll make a motion to amend the resolution to limit the voting to those who have residence in the county.
I don't understand what you said. Are you limiting it, are you limiting it, limiting it to just the voters in the unincorporated, or are you including both Silvercliff and Westcliff? I didn't understand.
Well, as the amendment that was proposed by counsel was that if we were going to limit it to the rural residents. Is there any way, Kelly, that we can separate this as to rural property owners?
Separate it?
Well, as an example, I live, if I live in Westcliff and I got a place outside of town, I certainly have an interest in the fight because it impacts my place outside of town, but I'm prohibited from participating on what impacts that property because of a resident in town.
Right.
Is there a way that we can permit those who have rural properties?
There is not. So if they lived in town and owned a piece of property in the county, is what you're saying, there's not. The only time that a landowner can vote on something when they don't live in that part is in a special district election.
So this will be determined by what the voter's address is, and if they, even though they have two properties, if they, if their primary resident address is in town, they're considered a citizen of the town?
Yes.
Did I make the clear counseling? That we, the motion I made is that it's limited to those who are, live in rural portions of the county. The unincorporated areas incorporated? Yes. Thank you.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Okay, question, please. No, excuse me, discussion. Does anybody here else have a discussion on this? Is there some, yes, John?
I would support the amendment.
Yes, ma'am?
Kelly said that you could do a district.
I need you to speak, Assistant.
Kelly said that you could do a district ballot. Why can you not include District 3, which is Custer, or Westcliff and Silvercliff?
No, she was talking about special districts and something else.
That's like Fire District, Water District, Hospital District.
Thank you. Just time on call for the question. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Anything else, Counselor? All right. At this time, I don't see a reason for an executive session. Do any of you have a reason we should?
Yes.
And we'll move on to normal business. I would like to juggle this just a little bit, if we may, if you don't mind. I know a lot of you have things to do, but Beth is here with the ambulance, and if we could get her, if we could get the RETAC grant on first, and if you have no objection at all, I can address that, so we can move on. Okay? Beth, would you like to?
Yes, thank you for that. I did print you guys off the new, some of our RETAC grant guidelines, and also I business cards for each of you have become official, so. So the way they were doing RETAC funds for the counties is that they were cutting a check every six months, twice a year, $7,500, and that money was coming directly to our county. Chuck Ipeleto would create a budget. He would go to all the different entities that were able to use the RETAC funds and get what they would like to use for the fiscal year on the RETAC funds. They've made some changes. There was some embezzlement going on up north with one of the RETAC fund places up there. So they've decided, it came down from the state of Colorado, actually, to change how we get our RETAC funds now. So now we have to apply for kind of like a mini grant through RETAC, and they've given us forms to fill out. I did submit those to Brenda. I hope you guys had a chance to look at them. So I'm requesting RETAC funds, and I wasn't aware of the change. They did this. They did this kind of July 1st of this year, so I wasn't aware. I had ordered two Stryker stair chairs. For those of you that don't know what these are, they're stair chairs that help us get our patients out safely out of a house. And we had very, two old ones, probably back in the 1980s, that would pinch patients, pinch our workers. And so to provide safety for our patients and our crew members, I received a $2,000 grant through our automobile insurance for these, to go towards the cost of these. Total cost was like sixty-three hundred and some change. And so I went ahead and ordered them without knowing that the RETAC guidelines was going to change on how we get our funds. So I'm requesting the difference of the cost of the stair chairs, which was about forty-three hundred and some change. Also, our emergency vehicle operator instructor, the previous manager, had let his license certificate go, so I'd like to send him to a class in October in La Hanta, Colorado, to get recertified as our emergency vehicle operator instructor. And then I'm also requesting funds to send four employees to the state EMS conference in Keystone, Colorado. We've done it in, every year in the past for quite some time now. So those are the three grants currently that I am requesting. I think our county is still going to get the fifteen thousand. I am going to the meeting next, next week, so I'll make sure that that, I heard that there might be thirteen thousand is what we're getting for county now?
That's what I saw.
And so that, that's changing. And then any funds that are left over at the end of the year that any county hasn't spent, they're putting it into another mini grant process that anybody could apply for those grants. And you'll see the guidelines of who can apply for the RETAC funds, who can use the RETAC funds, what they're used for. And so, right now, those are the three RETAC grants that we're requesting.
That's just such an odd number, eighteen hundred and seventy-two dollars.
For which one? I'm sorry. I wrote those like a month ago, so.
Okay, I'm looking at the fiscal year 2017, 2018 grant application.
Okay.
Yeah, that one, it just seemed like such an odd number.
The EMS conference.
Eighteen seventy-two, not two thousand, just curious.
That's the total for the room and then for four employees for the cost of the actual conference.
That's the reimbursable cost?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So the room, the cost for each employee to go is two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And then the rest of that is the cost for the room. We did just get a two-bedroom unit this time, which costs a little bit less than getting two separate rooms for the three nights.
Excellent. What action do we need to take here?
The only thing is on the back page is that you guys just need to sign one set of each, each request stating that you agree with the RETAC fund request. And then the process is, is now I turn these into RETAC, and then they're the, ultimately the decision maker on the use of the RETAC funds.
Okay. I believe we just have one copy of a request. Am I missing something here?
That's all I have.
We only have one copy.
The only, the only grant application that you sent me was the one for the eighteen seventy-two.
Oh, there should have been two more, for Stryker stair chairs and then the conference for, okay, well, then I will have to get those.
And what's the total of all three of those?
Off the top of my head, I'm not quite sure, to be honest with you.
The chairs were about, how much, we talked about that, Beth, they were?
The stair chairs, it's like forty-three something?
Yeah.
And then the EVAC training is for his room and the training, and I don't think it's no more than five hundred.
Well, yeah, here we have the chairs, we still have twenty-four hundred, twenty-eight hundred in RETAC funds. I guess that we still have, I guess we, you say that.
Chuck has used that twenty-eight hundred dollars that was left over for last year. He bought some scoop stretchers for the fire department, and then he bought a vacuum splint floor, search and rescue. So as of the beginning of our new fiscal year, we have no, we had no RETAC funds left over from last fiscal year.
Okay, and we need, as I recall from our conversations, we need to at least address these chairs as soon as possible.
Correct, because we, we did, like I said, I was not aware that it was going to be changing, and so I went ahead and ordered them. And so we, and then we did receive the $2,000 grant money, so we have paid the difference through Custer County EMS, through that, so.
Dawn, do I give any thoughts?
I, I think we have to have the paperwork to approve.
Right, and I apologize.
We have to have the paperwork to approve this. So if you could get that to us as soon as possible.
Oh, definitely. I'm not quite sure what happened, but.
Is there any county financial obligation for any of these? Are these, it's a hundred percent grant that we don't have to provide any matching funds?
No, 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 there's no matching funds. I, like I said, I did give the $2,000 grant through our automobile insurance, through the ambulance insurance, so that's coming off the total of it. But there's no matching funds, we're, you know, there's no city funds, no county funds, nothing like that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've got a choice. We can, we have a document in front of us, I think, which explains the registration and so forth for some training. I think this is self-explanatory, we don't have the other two documents. We meet again not until the end of the month. Is there some way the board thinks that we might be able to handle this before the end of the month, or do we just, would you prefer to wait until we have the documentation and have our next meeting?
Is, is that going to cause an issue for you time-wise?
I don't, I, you know, I'm, I'm kind of flying by the seat of my pants on this one because it's a whole new process, so I'm not quite, I just wanted to make sure to get these three, because I knew that these three were the three that I was going to be doing here in the next few months.
But you're also caught in the middle.
Right, right. So, and I apologize that you did not get the other two.
Are the grant applications all the same? Because this one says due by December.
They are all exactly the same, they're just, the, the three different changes on it is the amount and what it's for. All the wording is all the same on the other three, and, and I have those, I have them at the station, so.
Councillor, can we approve three of them, even though we haven't seen to provide that the verbiage is the same as the one we're looking at?
You can approve it conditionally, once the documentation is presented without having it on another agenda. If in fact, everything appears to be identical to what she's represented, then you can authorize by motion, Bob, to sign all three applications.
Thank you.
I think that's what I would like us to do, but I'll let you phrase whatever you'd like. You'll make motions or?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and I'll make a motion that we unconditionally approve the one application that was presented to us in the amount of eighteen hundred and seventy-two dollars, and conditionally approve the two that we have not reviewed, pending a review to see that the verbiage is substantially the same with just different amounts in it. And if it's acceptable, then approve it without further board action and allow the chairman to go ahead and sign.
Yeah, I'll second that, let's have some discussion.
No discussion for me?
I think my, my position on this, and it isn't something that just today we saw, Beth contacted me a couple, a couple of weeks ago, that, that we had this procedure that we'd had a change in, and we went over some of the things that we needed that were in process. I think that our, by approving this, we are enabling our emergency medical services to continue to operate to the best of their abilities. And therefore, I will call for a question on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, Dawn?
Just for clarification, she does have to turn in the request?
She has provided me with these two copies, do I verify, and we go through them and see that they're the same content, except that the purpose and the amount is different than what appears on here?
So we will have record?
If everything's in order, let me go ahead so we can expedite it so we can get the stair chairs.
I would also like to ask you guys to maybe reevaluate who sits on the RETAC board. Currently, it's Chuck Yubelito, myself, and Cindy Howard. An alternate is Gail Stolffus, who no longer lives in the county. She was the public health director there, so we definitely probably should get her removed since she's no longer in the county. I do have two alternate board members that I'd like to suggest, my assistant manager, Molly Lantis, and Chris Coches, to sit on the RETAC board. They're heavily involved in EMS. They also both live in Plauro County, like myself, so we're able to attend those meetings in Plauro County. And they can, they know the EMS system and who can apply for these funds and who can help.
Do you have a maximum amount of people on your board?
There's three board members and then three alternatives, so it's a total of six. If Alyssa wants to be an alternative, that would be great. But it's three actual board members and then three alternatives.
And here were the actuals right now?
Chuck Yubelito, myself, and Cindy Howard.
I would like you to maybe to put this together in a format force and.
Okay.
Something we can look at. I'd like to hear what your comments are going to be.
I don't really have a comment, I'm just.
Oh, you're just telling me hi.
No. I guess my comment is, for one thing, I don't know how much longer Chuck Yubelito's going to be with us. Another thing is though, yeah, I would definitely at least like to be an alternate. Two things about that, I live in Custer County, I'm like involved in what's going on, on a, you know, outside of EMS, so. But I also have a sound understanding of EMS and how that works and how RETAC works, because I sat on RETAC in northeastern Colorado, not with the guy that was embezzling money. Just to be clear.
It was up north, it was up north, just to clarify that, so.
Not the same complete place, I know where you're talking about, but. So, that being said, and I know that those positions have to be.
They're appointed by you. And I know that the RETAC board is getting ready to come to you because of the lack of attendance on Custer County's part at these RETAC meetings. They're usually the third Thursday of the month, so I try to make sure that I'm off. They've been switching them for the last three months to the fourth Thursday of the month. That's also the West Custer County Hospital District Board meeting, so I'm already scheduled to be here for that, and so we've, we've been missing them. Cindy and Chuck have not been able to go. So the other two employees that I'm, that I'm asking to be placed on the board are usually off on those days, and since they do live in Plauro County, they are able to attend those meetings. For me, shall I be on if they switch it to a board meeting that I have in Custer County? So.
I think probably the thing to do is to put this as an agenda item.
Okay.
For our future meetings, and stuff's going on vacation, but so we have a time, and if they want to bring some stuff before the board, they'll sit down, and if we need to have a workshop first, we can do that, whatever we need to address it too. This RETAC board, folks, is a, is a critical part of our emergency programs, and we sure need to be sure that we're getting the most benefit out of it that we can. Would that be?
Because they'll pull our funds eventually if there's no involvement with Custer County. They'll eventually pull that thirteen to fifteen thousand dollars that we use for medical training, medical equipment, those kind of things to provide the service that we provide.
I would just like to make sure that Alyssa can be part of that workshop if we do that direction.
I think it has to be, those who have the, have an interest in the process and an interest in the, the results of it, I think it has to represent the broader ranges with him. Chuck was on there, I think, back in the days when he was with.
Correct.
The EMS, and it's just been a carryover, we're going to replace it, may.
Correct.
So, I would certainly encourage, I think, people to be involved, and let's look at what, what we think makes the best sense as a makeup for the board to be, to be representative.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, let's go on to next item of business. I hear you've lost money. It would be the child fatality. Do you think you have a chair up here so you don't have to stand all the time?
It's good for us to stand. Okay, so what I have here is ill-preparedness, because I should have probably made a copy of this for each of you. So in the past, 2014, 2015, 2015, 2016, 2016, 2017, grant cycles for the child fatality protective services, that money was not used. I'm not entirely sure why, I'm not sure if Gail didn't have programs, anyways, we still have that money, it's gone into the general fund. I'm here today to ask you for it back because I have a program that can use it. So that being said, there is a total of five thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars in that line item that has not been used. Troy Baumgartner from, is the counselor at the school, is running the Sources of Strength program. Let me back up one step and just say that in my assessment of the county, one of our main goals and problems is teen youth suicides. As you all know, we've had an issue with that in the past five years or so. Sources of Strength is a program that combats that. It's, it addresses bullying, it addresses signing up like, you know, seniors with freshmen so that they're not quite so overwhelmed when they start high school, kind of a buddy system. Sources of Strength promotes that. So Troy has asked me for three thousand four hundred dollars for that program, and he has a nice little budget here if you'd like to see it, of what he's going to do with that money. So I'd like to provide that to him out of this program. I also have the scope of work here, which tells us that that's appropriate from these grant monies to spend it on that. As far as the rest of the money goes, Drive Smart Colorado is a program that in the past has provided car seats for individuals who can't afford them or have been in a wreck, and so they're kept like at, well, basically they're kept in the ER so that you can send them home with them, but anyways, to provide car seats for safe travel. They don't do that anymore. State of Colorado cut that funding. So I would like to spend the rest of that money, which is two thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars, to provide car seats as well as to help fund the teen education program as far as like the Alive at Twenty-Five. And then also, I'm working with Shannon to do just a local, getting our law enforcement together with our teen drivers to do like a defensive driving awareness, mountain driving, snow driving course.
Alyssa and I spoke about this at length just recently, and I told you that I supported what you were doing. I just want to reiterate to my colleagues that this is money that was awarded to you, your organization, as grant money, this is not taxpayer.
Correct.
Custer County taxpayer dollars. And what you're really asking for is just to reallocate the money from the program that has been unused, the infant fatality program, to better serve the community with the school programs and your childhood seat program.
Yes.
Did I portray that properly?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, so this is not tax money coming out, this is money that we've already gotten, we just haven't spent it, but I have to come to you because it's been just swashed into the general fund.
And my last question is, of the money that was received in the grants that went into the general fund, were they in any way restricted, or is it acceptable for us to go ahead and reallocate for these?
So I've talked to Donna Harvey and Virginia. Not sure what her last name is.
Virginia.
Virginia, thank you. And they both said it's not restricted. We didn't have to pay it back, so it's still there. It's not like, you know. So the money's still there. It's not restricted. We should be good. I just need your blessing.
Now, I have here a document for thirty-four hundred dollars. Do you have any other documents for the rest of the money? Do we have those?
I do not. The only, and I came up with that number from, that's what's left, from what we haven't spent, that I'd like to just use with Shannon to do those programs for Drive Smart. I mean, I have like written here Drive Smart.
Well, I'm going, we'll get this stuff ahead of time so we have time to look at it and we have a budget. I don't think that's critical in this case because if you feel comfortable, it's going, but I just, call it short.
I know, I'm sorry. I tried to get this on so that we could get the sources of strength money in the ceiling cycle to the school.
Okay, that's what I wanted to ask.
That's why I was sitting there trying to. Yeah.
Because vouchers are due today.
Today, no.
I can ask just one last question. The Child Fatality Fund, which it was originally allocated, hasn't been used. Is that a program that we should be having in place and maybe should be using some of this money?
Yeah, and that's what I brought the scope of work to show you, you know, for the grant. And that's why I say I'm not, I'm not sure. I can't speak for.
Sure.
For Gail. I don't know why, you know, it wasn't used in the past. But it's. So this is a double-sided grant, which I'll be coming for more later probably, but this is what I have for now. So the Child Prevention Systems, Child Fatality Prevention System, the goal number one is to reduce the number of child deaths in Colorado due to the following causes: undetermined, unintentional injury, violence, motor vehicle incidents, child abuse and neglect, sudden unexpected infant deaths, and suicide. So that's our, the number one goal of this grant.
I'd like to make the motion that we allocate the grant money used for the Child Infant Fatality Fund of fifty-five hundred and seventy-one dollars. We allocate that money, reallocate that money to the use as you proposed to us in the school, what were they called?
Sources of Strength.
Sources of Strength, thank you. Sources of Strength, and the balance of it of approximately thirty-four hundred dollars and the balance that'd be used for, to help the sheriff with driving instructions, car seats, and related issues like that.
Does there a second of motion?
I just want to reiterate the total on that because I had it different than what Jay stated.
Five thousand five hundred and seventy-one. And that's, that number came out of our grant charter, but we have.
You may be somewhere in that and give a copy to Kelly so we can determine this, please.
I'll second the motion as stated.
Move in seconded to reallocate the funding. Is there any discussion, additional discussion this time?
I would just like to compliment you on, A, finding available money to putting it to use for our youngsters in the county.
Thank you.
Good job.
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, same sign. Do I need to sign anything on this? I guess we don't have.
No, because it's just, and Donna Harvey said that as long as it's in the minutes.
Can you maybe send me a copy of the grant stuff that you gave them?
Do you want, you can actually just have all of this because.
Okay.
That's what you want?
Okay.
Do you, do you need this one? This is just the, from all the years?
No.
Okay.
Well, again, I want to add to what Jay said, that I think as a community, we can thank you and welcome you for all the efforts and things that we're doing. You come on and as indicated, you're still at the ground, you're still running, and we have to put a sheet down.
Thank you.
John?
Yes, I'm sure this money's worthwhile. We want to spend every penny of it, but is it appropriate to ask Troy to do a presentation so the community knows what this program is?
Is appropriate for what?
To ask Troy to do a presentation about this program so the community knows what the program is.
I think that's our discretion, and I, at this point in time, looking at what we have here, I don't, I feel comfortable making that decision. We certainly could, but I think at this point in time, we've got a long working relationship, and I think it's a continuing.
I'm comfortable with the allocation. I'm just curious what the program is that the community might want to know what it is.
So, two things about that. First, if I may, that's okay. First of all, I think Troy and myself would be happy to put something together so that there's a little bit of awareness about what's going on. We can put it in the papers and whatever. On the flip side of that, because it's such a sensitive issue of suicide and bullying, there's a certain amount of confidentiality that goes with it. So, to promote the program, to let everybody know it's there, it's what we're doing, absolutely. To get into the nitty-gritty of what's being said with the kids and stuff, absolutely not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next item on the agenda will be the CCOM contract for the courthouse.
Okay, I have before me the CCOM service order that Chuck initiated. I just wanted to have Clint look over this. It's the same contract that we agreed to for our sheriff's department. We discussed waiting a month to make sure that that was working the way it should be and that we would add on the same service to our county courthouse. So, if you don't mind, just pass that to Clint.
I've got it here. I've looked at it. The only question I've got is, there's a monthly amount, but then there's also a figure of two hundred and fifty dollars for non-recurring installation fees.
That's to put, yeah, that's just to put it on the building because it's a wireless, so it's the exact same thing that happened with our sheriff's.
So that's a one-time fee, and then the monthly amount's a one eighty-nine ninety-five?
Yes.
All right. Is the one with the sheriff satisfactory?
Yeah, that's what, we wanted to wait and see how that was working, and they love it.
All right, then I don't see any other problem with it.
The reason we're looking at this, folks, as you know, the, today's world requires a lot of electronic capabilities, and an example, we moved into the area of law enforcement with body cameras, and the amount of information generated on the shift with a body camera is a lot of, a lot of gigabytes, and that needs to be stored electronically. And with our current system, it's extremely slow to get that information transferred so we can. Is that paraphrasing right, Mike? Is that?
Well, absolutely. We installed that CCOM, installed their high-speed internet for our reporting program at the sheriff's office. We're required by law to submit all our case files to the district attorney electronically now, and so our admin has to physically download those cases and send them electronically. With the sentry link that we have at the sheriff's office, depending on the number of photos or video that have been involved in the case, an average would take about eight hours to download a case and send it to the DA. And when that happens, then the rest of the internet office creeps along. Some of the files wouldn't even transmit, and we'd have to break them down to do it. So, right now, we're currently working, dispatch is still under sentry link, but the patrol side is under CCOM, and we're downloading those cases and sending them to the DA in about twenty minutes. So it's made a huge difference in how we can do our reports and store them and transmit them, and it's made a tremendous difference. And we kept sentry link work and dispatch just so that we didn't put all our eggs in one basket and to see how it's going to work out. So far, it's very successful.
Other reasons we've had in the courthouse, when we have, almost all our departments use the internet to one degree or another, and when we have a lot of departmental use, it really slows it down, and our big demand are from our accounting department, from our financial records, and when we get ready to run payroll and run some of these things, it's almost impossible because it's so slow, and those are things that need to be handled, we feel, in a fairly rapid manner. In addition, Donna, I think this will also result in, will this result in any savings?
This is going to result in significant savings with how we use sentry link currently.
Okay. Did you make a motion?
No, we were just having.
No, I said, but do you want to make a motion to?
I'll make a motion to accept the service agreement for CCOM to get on board the wireless Business Fifty service that they can provide.
I'll second the motion.
And made, moved and seconded that we approved the contract with CCOM for our communications. This time I'd ask if there's any discussion. If not, I'll call for the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. The next item we have is the Tourism Grant Letter.
Yep, I just want to make everybody aware of the fact that on September the twelfth, I supported a letter regarding the marketing matching grant program to the Colorado Tourism Office, and this was requested by our Tourism Board. The support and the grant that they were getting together was due on September fifteenth last Friday, so I just want to make for the record show that I did support a letter for the grant application.
Okay, do I hear a motion to move this letter?
I still move.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. The next item we have on the agenda will be the intergovernmental agreement for participation in the central front range transportation planning region. This is an intergovernmental agreement on the Department of Transportation. We have meetings every two or three months talking about all the projects in a region. This region that we're a part of and the governing entities are Custer, El Paso, Fremont Park, and Teller Counties, the towns of Alma, Brookside, Calhoun, Canyon City, Coal Creek, Kribble Creek, Fair Play, Florence, Rayma, Rockville, Silver Cliff, Victor, Westwood, and Williamsburg. The reason this is important, is we go through and select projects, select priorities. Each, each entity on here is a counting, is a voting member. The last meeting we had, we didn't have enough of these that had been signed to actually have a form for the recommendations to the state seat up. So this is something that's rather routine, but it's also something that we need to enter into. Have you had a chance, Clint, to look at it?
Yes.
It's basically just a boilerplate agreement that says we have a right and we have an obligation to be involved in planning of what's going to go on on the state highways in the region, and this gives us then the chance for us to lobby and to push projects that we think are important for Custer County. The only ones that we have upcoming this next year in Custer will be resurfacing Highway Sixty-N South towards from the airport. That's about, I think, ten miles, and then in addition to that, they have about an additional fourteen miles on Highway Sixty-N that goes into Warfords County. Highway Sixty-N in the last five years has had a dramatic increase in truck traffic. We have a lot of people that are coming off the interstate at Walsenburg, coming through Westwood and down to Port Paxton, hitting Highway Fifty at Port Paxton. The roads are deteriorating. They're going to have a lot of maintenance down the road, but this is the current projects. For this year, we're looking at additional projects down the road. Having said that, I would make a motion that we approve this intergovernmental agreement. I'm the representative on that board for the Regional Planning Commission for Transportation Planning for the central front range of Colorado. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion as stated.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? And as an example, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. I had requested that we change these lines over here by the spin subdivision. Pretty dangerous when you pull out there. They said they would. They take care of it. Well, between the people I talked to and the people on the ground, they just come out and repainted it. So I remind them again that we need to get that changed, that it needs to be fixed, and I do have a supervisor tension in Colorado Springs. And I'm still pushing to get those lines changed and get it fixed, but this gives me leverage. We're part of this. I can bring it up in that point. The request has been that we have a no-passing zone from a safety standpoint, so the folks are pulling out that subdivision. As you pull out, I understand there's, occasionally you're met with a car coming down in the passing lane going at a high rate of speed, and we were asked to make this change. Yes, ma'am?
The change was made.
Pardon?
It was painted. It was painted a couple months ago.
Yeah, but it hasn't, but the passing lane hasn't been changed, has it? See, we have.
It's double striped.
There's several driveways there that people come out on the highway.
Right.
That is still a passing lane.
No. The passing lane begins at the middle of our driveway. Going up, but.
And I understood that you wanted that changed from your driveway up, that there wasn't any passing in that area. That was the request that was made to us sometime back.
I think we can live with the way it is now. I think.
Well, if you're happy, I'm happy.
The problem is, is that people are still starting to pass in the no-passing lane. It would help if we had sheriff deputies out there writing tickets or monitoring it. The passing is still going on, but it's not as bad as it looks.
But if that was no passing all the way up, there wouldn't be any incentive to start to pass on the WL line before they get to the passing lane. I'd like to ask, yeah, Mike? Please.
It don't matter what you paint on the road, people are passing fast. But I did watch when they painted those lines there. It used to be passing either direction, and when they repainted it, they did eliminate passing in one direction, so it has improved. And just so you know, I wrote a passing ticket there last week.
Thank you.
We're watching it, we just can't beat everyone once.
I think.
So if everybody's happy, I'm happy.
I think the history is people traveling that road are just used to passing because they know a straightaway is coming, whether it's like you said, A or B.
Those are practical points. If we don't pass there, you don't pass for part of these.
Right, but it is better.
Better? Okay, but anyway, back to what I started to say, though, this less is less on this form, or things just like.
No. I have a problem with the passing. When I'm coming down my driveway, they pass, and they don't even care if I'm in the highway or not. They start passing. So I do have the same problem that these folks have.
Mike indicated to you that he uses addressing as we can.
We have this.
My problem runs down, ma'am, is that we only have so many deputies, and we need to be in areas where they're most effective, and I, I want to turn that back over to Shannon and law enforcement.
Well, we've certainly got a lot more full hours on this end of the county than we've ever had in the past. Currently, we have three deputies that come in from out of the county, and these are parts of the shop. We've got another one in training that lives right here in town, so we're going to have a more increased presence here, but like today is.
a more increased presence here, but like today is our, it's our shift change day, so most of the crew is working, and on those days, we assign people just to work decent in the county and stand in. So we get a lot more exposure, we're writing a lot more tickets, but we can't babysit all. You're going to get drivers like that. I've been doing this for 30 years, and those kind of drivers keep us in business.
Okay, I'd like to pull it back to the topic of the passing ordinance. I agree with the discussion. Yes, ma'am?
Well, maybe what you should do is focus on double striping wall mark of 25, and we appreciate the speed that it was double striped in front of our property.
A 25 is, where is that exactly?
It's between Lattmore and Greenwood.
Roughly the county shop.
Yeah.
From the county shop up to-
Oh, okay. Yeah, I got, almost got hit there one morning.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I turned into my driveway and I had somebody, and I had my signal on and I slowed down, brake lights on, and somebody went around me and I had to swerve over to miss that, and I had to swerve.
I was coming down and the guy just jumped out in front of me.
Yeah, it's scary there.
All of us have seen that.
So maybe shift your focus to double striping that section. I think our section-
Well, if you're happy, because if you're happy with what you have now, well, we're done.
We're good.
Good, okay. I will bring this up to your section that Mike concurs. Something we can talk about over a minute. Okay, do, any more discussion regarding the agreement? Donna, I'll call for the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, the next item we have on the agenda is the Emery Building Permit. We received a complaint, and Jackie is not able to be here today because of some other commitments we're applying in zoning office. We have a situation where a party built a barn without a building permit. The standard procedure for this is if you get a permit, it's one price. If you build it without a permit, then it's three times that price. And we have a number of letters, I think we talked about this before, that she's concerned that she doesn't feel she ought to have to pay the extra penalty for not having acquired the permit in a timely manner. I have a letter here from the, from the person that has the issue. I guess I'll quickly read it. Dated September the 15th, 2017, Custer County Commissioners, to the Custer County Commissioners, this letter is in response to perceived building permit violation and penalty. It has been assessed approximately one month ago on a portable horse shed on personal property located at a physical address of 1445 County Road 382, Raleigh, Colorado. Also permits at this address, also located at this address, is in home and final stages of construction. All building inspections and permits are current and in order for destruction. No violations of state or county code have been assessed, and the owners continue to be compliant to the best of their knowledge. The setting and circumstances will be described in brief that lead to the inspector's perceived violation. The Custer County Inspector visited private property adjacent to the address above in the Baltrum Carcel for the purpose of applying a cease and desist order for construction taking place on a cabin slash house following storm damage. The owner was available to dispute this order, and the end result was no cease and desist order placed on the construction site, and the work continued. However, if the owner was not available, the order, the order would have been placed in error. During his visit, the inspector observed a portable horse shed, formerly referred to as shed, easily visible by an existing road, sitting on the property identified in the first paragraph. This shed was placed for the purposes of shelter for two horses during the summer months. In fact, a portable corral and electric fence are adjacent to the shed, and a gate blocks the front of the shed to keep the animals out during the owner's absence. Approximately three weeks ago, the owner received a letter indicating a building code violation had occurred, and the building permit fee would be assessed at three times the standard rate because of the, because of purchase, because no purchase in prior to construction. The shed has no foundation, is on metal skids. In fact, the grass is still growing inside the shed. The shed is not a bunkhouse or a dwelling. The zoning permit application lists foundations indicating permanent structures require permits. During a phone call to the county applying a zoning office, a 100 square foot or under rule was explained that would not assess a building fee. The approximate square footage of the shed is eight by 14 or 112 square feet. A list of the facts. The owners currently have a home on the property that has been violated by all building codes and regulations. Two, there is no intent to avoid building permit fees since the shed is portable and is used as a horse shelter. Three, the shed is easily visible, indicating no intent to hide it from inspection. Four, the owners were not given an opportunity to dispute perceived building violation. Five, the application provides little information on outside structures and interpretation that can be left to the reader. There are two issues to be addressed. One, has a violation actually occurred? Two, the three times standard fee assessed as a penalty. A three times standard fee assessed as a penalty for an unintended, unintentional permit violation is excessive. In addition, this is the first occurrence of any perceived or actual violation. The shed is not a dwelling and is portable on skids. The owner should be given the benefit of the doubt and given opportunity to dispute the allegations or to pay the outstanding fee without penalty. This opportunity should be applied consistently to all property owners and taxpayers in the county. It's not difficult to determine this was an act of placing a shed on property without the intention to avoid permit fees, and a disputeable perceived violation was made by the inspector. The Custer County Commissioners have the authority and opportunity to rise a penalty imposed on taxpayers in this standing. Consider the purpose of the county to serve its taxpayers, the perception of the resonance towards the county governance would be one of support and willingness to serve in the event an alternative assault to change fee structure there and the inspector process. What is the purpose of such a penalty in this case, except to impose negative impressions on county governance? Thank you for your time and consideration. Further communication, further communications, please feel free to contact Jan Emery, and give us both a phone number and an email, and assign Jan Emery, Custer County property owner and taxpayer. I also have attached here additional correspondence regarding the situation. So I think what we have here, basically, and my colleagues, do you all have copies of the picture and stuff here? We have a horse shed, I know it's hard to see, folks, but a little portable facility back here that is about 112 square feet. So, and then this other one is a picture of their home. Having said this, I think at this time, what they're requesting is that we waive the penalty fees and permit them to purchase a permit at the normal rate. As a bit of history, this is not the first time this has come up, the first time with this person, but in the three years that I've been on here, we've had four or five other occasions of where people have come up with, with problems and situations. Some, there's been a very, I don't want to say intent, but it's very obvious that they were trying to get around it, and others, there were times when they'd occurred, it was a very minor thing, and we have done both things. We have waived it and we have not waived it. Let me introduce it, and I will be pretty much on it.
I guess Jay, I'd like to know, because you're responsible for planning and zoning, did Jackie Hobby have any remarks?
Yeah, I think Jackie felt that this was more of an oversight than a flagrant disregard of the rules, and as a result, I think she would ask us and recommend to us, and I actually concur with her, that there are a lot of rules to follow. This person did not intentionally do it. She didn't try and hide this family. I don't mean, the lady signed the letter, but it was her, she and her husband. I would think in a case like this, it would certainly be appropriate to charge the normal fee and not a penalty, since there was not a, any flagrant reason for her to, to do this. So I'm in favor, I personally, with Jackie's concurrence, am in favor of waiving the penalty, but not the fee.
You know, it's an interesting point that comes up here, is that we say, okay, this is a portable structure, and portable horse facility or something is fairly commonly used. You move them when it gets wet and muddy and a mess underneath if you want to, whether you move your structure over and be on dry ground and go again. To me, in a sense, it's portable, but something's portable only for so long, and it stays in one place for a period of time, and then it becomes attached or becomes stationary. So, I mean, that's, I don't have an answer to that, but that was one of the issues that I hadn't thought about until we were going to do a portable facility. Donna, do you have any thoughts you'd like to make?
I don't have any issue with charging-
I would entertain-
Yeah, I mean, just staying with the initial fee and not tripling.
Yeah, would entertain a motion to waive the penalty and go with the standard fee?
I so move.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Tom? John?
In West Cliff, I've got two portable carports that I was not required to have a permit for because they're portable. So I'm just questioning the fact that this is a portable structure, whether or not it would require a fee.
Well, Jordan and City are on the county, so that's, you know, their interpretations. Our regulations require that any building over 100 square feet have a permit. I think this comes down to what do we, is there something you'd like to share with us, Jackie?
Well, I just was questioning, you know, she asked two questions. The first was, do I even need a permit if there's no foundation? And so I was, that was my question, is does this built, does this movable building fall within that 100 square foot definition? I don't know. That was my question.
At this point in time, it'll be something that I think would go back to planning and zoning for their interpretation because of their standards, and they could come to us for additional clarification. But I see the question, the primary question here, and I think is appropriate so far, I think she's indicated that there's an oversight issue, and I think we need to look at that, you know, in the future, but as of right now, as I consider this, it's something that's been there apparently for a period of time, wasn't moved on a two-week basis or whatever, and I don't, at this time, I think our primary question is, where are we going to charge a permit? And our current interpretation of the statute says that it does require a permit because it's a routine. And I think also, Jackie, and I don't know, I'm just talking off the back of my, back of the cuff right now, but I think there are also situations regarding mobile homes and stuff that aren't property so long, or they abandoned, or they have structures so old. But at this point in time, the question before the board is, are we going to waive the fees? And I will call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. And that would be an interesting question for you guys to take forward and see what you want. I agree with you, it's a question of what is portability, but also is portable, how long is it in place and so forth. And it probably is attached to some degree, and the reason I say that, I have seen a lot of portable buildings, portable horse barns that aren't tied down, and the wind hits them and they destroy it, so you have to anchor them down in some manner to keep them from blowing away. Okay, at this time, that's what I have on the agenda. Do we have anything else to come up for the board at this time? Mike has something.
I've got an item under full business, and it has to do with our disposing of an asset. I need to get approval from the board on that.
Will we get you, maybe you move up a little more, Mike? We talked about this informally in the past. Would you explain briefly to us the situation?
Well, on behalf of the sheriff, because he's out of town right now, one of the functions that I do is manage the fleet for the sheriff's office. As you well know, we've got some aging vehicles. We're improving on our fleet a little bit, but we have a policy for getting rid of assets. When it comes to vehicles, we have to do by policy a sealed bid with a public notice and then have a bid opening, and I did check with our finance director, and that policy is, can be altered at the board's discretion on a case-by-case basis, is how it's worked in the policy. So the circumstances, we have two identical vehicles we purchased new in 2001. One of them, unit 15, has over 200,000 miles on it. We've retired it to a spare vehicle for the posse.
How many miles?
200. 212,000.
That's right, over 200, yeah.
The identical car that we bought for that is unit one. It's got 200,000 miles on it, and the transmission has failed. Our shop diagnosed it as a transmission problem. I took it to Austin Automotive, transmission replacement. I took it to Aztec Transmission. Three opinions, it needs a transmission at the tune of about $4,000. That car is not worth repairing, not worth putting back in the fleet. In the meantime, we had another car with a transmission problem, took it to Aztec Transmission, and they repaired it, $850 bill. Unit 15 is still in service, but it developed a bad seal and it's leaking transmission fluid. It's yet to be repaired, and that estimate is $250. Aztec Transmission provided that estimate. Since vouchers are due this week, the bill to repair unit four is $850. The owner of Aztec Transmission made an offer to purchase unit one, which needs a transmission, and I spoke with him yesterday. He is willing to trade out repairs for unit four and unit 15 in exchange for unit one.
In exchange for us giving the vehicles a-
Right. He made an offer to purchase it, because I told him we weren't going to fix it.
Right.
And he said, I'd be interested in purchasing that, and he basically offered us about $1,000 for it.
The situation we have, folks, is that our fleet, sheriff's vehicles, bought them at a pretty high mileage, and the miles they've put on are different than the miles that I put on. They're over a rough road, you know, it's heavy use, pretty rugged use of those vehicles. I have two concerns. Number one is that when the vehicle becomes a high mileage vehicle, the odds of it failing mechanically are much greater. And number two, and a bigger concern, folks, is that I do not want to have on my conscience a young man or a young woman in law enforcement who's injured or was killed because of mechanical failure in a vehicle that should have been replaced. And this is what we've been trying to follow the last two, three years, Mike, to replace, what, three, I think, or something?
Right.
And this is just continuing on. With what Mike has laid out, it's basically, it's kind of a horse trading, but we're getting more value for a dollar, I think, than if we were just to try to sell those vehicles. You know what it's like to buy a vehicle on auction that doesn't have a transmission is, you know, you're almost as well off taking it down to Bonnie and crushing it and getting $200. So that's my comment. Jake, did you?
Yeah, I think the proposal sounds reasonable. I'm just concerned about our policy that we have for the county on disposing of equipment and bids and that kind of thing, and I would, you know, if Donna Hobby is acceptable with it, I think it sounds like a very good deal.
I spoke with her yesterday about it to confirm, and she said it's not a problem. They just take it off the asset list, it rolls, it pulls right off the insurance roll. Right now, we're not even replacing that vehicle. It'll just come off the county asset list. We'll just have the repair bills. So all we need to do is show the auditor that we, what we did with that vehicle. So, and the reason I brought this up today is because vouchers are due tomorrow, today.
I'd like Donna to make some comments.
I don't have any problem with the process, except- I don't have any problem with the process, except that I would like to see in writing from Aztec what their proposal is.
Sure.
That's critical for the auditors to have that paper trail.
Right.
And for Donna.
And we... I haven't taken unit 15 out for repairs yet, because we've already exceeded our line item in budget repairs, and I've got three more vehicles that need tires by the end of the year. So what we would be doing right now, if you didn't approve this, I can move forward with it, but we'd be cutting a check to Aztec Transmission this week for $850. We still don't have unit 15 fixed, and we still can't use unit one. And then we would have to pay those public notices, do a sealed bid, and I checked on Kelly Blue Book and NADA values, and that car with 200,000 miles on it, in good condition, that means the transmission works, is worth $600.
Okay. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve the trading of the high-maintenance vehicles that have mechanical failures at this time, as proposed by the Sheriff's Department, and the details will be outlined in writing for our research.
I'll write up that agreement. And I spoke, like I said, with Donna Hobby and the owner of Aztec Transmission. It's all done, except for your approvals.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any additional discussion on this topic at this time?
Unless, John, you want to give me $1,500?
Take the money and write.
At this time, then, I will call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Get out and whip her up. I appreciate it. All right. Now, it's on to the handbacker. Yes, ma'am?
Yes. Last June, I sent Jay a message about a road issue on County Road 129, that a pipe had been installed. They took off the blacktop and sold the pipe and put sand in, and my grandson had a pretty bad bicycle accident on it. And Jay, I do want to thank you. See, I do say nice things about you. I do want to thank you for getting the sand taken out and dirt put in, so that it is, you know, a more solid surface. At that time, I talked to County Roads when they were doing that, and they said that it's not a county project, so they're not the ones that are going to be fixing the road. Well, it's three months later, it's still dirt, and I know County Roads comes in every once in a while and throws more dirt on top of it to keep it so that it's still flat and we don't have any more bike accidents. But what I'd like to know is, whose project is it, since it's supposedly a private project that put this hole in the road? And I can talk to them and find out, you know, when they're planning on fixing that road. It's about three or four feet wide and the entire width of the road.
If you wouldn't mind contacting them, that would be wonderful.
I don't know who it is.
Excuse me. I'm the person in charge of Roden Bridge, and that is my district.
Okay.
So this is where the buck comes to. I talked to the road boss, the top of the road boss, Phil, with the road bridge crew were the ones that fixed that. It wasn't Jay, but Roden Bridge Crew did. And they are going to be putting some asphalt over it when we have some more asphalt available. And they were going to get some more asphalt fairly quickly, because they still need some patching of chuckles before it freezes up this winter. So that is... I brought to our Roden Bridge's attention, and we are watching it. I apologize that your son or grandson had a bicycle wreck. He was, daddy was kind of going down a road in a hurry, maybe. But at the same time, there's no excuse...
Just for a teen, he knows.
But there's no excuse in not having that. That cut was made across the county road, as which is permitted by a landlord that was installing a pipeline across the road. I would hope in the future, when we have businesses that do this, that we have a two-week period or short period of time that they have to come back and replace that asphalt. In the past, it's been, well, they'll fix it, and we'll... When we get the oil, we'll fix it. I'm concerned that we just haven't been done yet. I drive that road several times a week. I live just about a mile and a half north of where that cut is, and I do appreciate your concern. The Roden Bridge are aware of it, and they will... Gary and I were talking about that just the other day. He said, well, we're going to get some more patching material, and when... Because we want to try to get some more chuckles passed before it freezes, and I think we'll get it coming. But I agree with you, and I appreciate your concern.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you all for being here. Me to turn.
Brandon?
I'm coming in.